Hey.
I got one special. All rise and say in pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Okay.
And if anybody please silence their cell phones. Alrighty, well we still have to go through all the other stuff, so this is about time for public comments regarding issues and matters on not on the agenda, but still within the jurisdiction of the city council of Waireka. Public comments period is not intended for question and answer period or conversation with the council or staff. Council members will, when recognized by the mayor, may ask questions of the presenter, but no action may be taken council during this public section of the meeting. Direct staff to prepare the report from places future special item. Now, do we have any, any public comments at this time, other than what we're talking about tonight? Okay. Alrighty, we shall go right into this. This medium obviously is to talk about Caltrans and all of us on the Highway 3 project going down Main Street, Main Street project. We want to discuss some of the beautification projects and some of the other issues that we want to talk about on that. But mainly this is to be talking about the beautification, cost of those beautification items and the different.
Sharon Barney. Join the meeting.
Alright, so at this point, I would like to turn it over.
Okay.
But there's agenda.
Sisson, okay.
Yes.
Alright, well, thank you. I'm Carrie Maltz. I'm representing Caltrans as project manager for the Waireka rehab project, as you just mentioned. With me tonight, I have Logan Moore, who's our landscape associate, who's going to present the actual aesthetic treatments that we've come up with. I also have Travis Gurney, who is our project engineer. And then presenting with me tonight will be the Siskiyou County Economic Development Council, who I'll be pulling up here as well to speak. A little, a little history is since 2016, we've been planning this, this project and it's a whammy. It's all the way through your downtown section. It's going to have a road diet, new sidewalks, new ADA, a lot of stuff, a long life pavement, concrete in some sections, a lot of utility movement, you know, billions, not billions, millions of dollars. We are steamrolling into our final design. We'll have it by this November, basically, and going to construction next summer. In five years, attitudes have changed, times have changed, both on Caltrans and probably the city as well. New interest has come up in taking advantage of us being in town and doing something for your city to help beautify it and possibly bring some economic stimulus as well. So since April in the workshop, we've met several times and brainstormed. We really are focusing on small items that make a big punch and are very maintenance friendly, as far as we can tell. We don't want to maintain it, you don't want to maintain it. So with that, we really, at this point, need commitment from the city of yes or no on these items, so I can draw up a cooperative agreement and maintenance agreements, and we can get into our plans and times to actually get it into the project. And so that's why I did request this special session to get you all together and present this and get everyone on board. And whichever way we move forward, we just need to know. The other two options or two things I want to discuss too is the rapid fashion beacons that have been part of our conversation. And, and then at the workshop, I just brought up lighting. And we also, I just wanted to give you a brief update. I don't have the exact numbers, but on the parcels the city was considering selling to us for maintenance station. So with that, like Logan, oh, question? Okay. With that, it's kind of nice to be up here and talking, I have to wear the mask. I will have Logan come up and give his presentation.
Awesome. Thank you.
And thank you guys for coming on.
Yes. Leave it there. As Carrie mentioned, my name's Logan Moore. I'm a landscape associate, it's the same thing as a landscape architect. That's just what we call ourselves at Caltrans. So we'll go ahead and go right into the presentation. Alright, go ahead and go to the next slide. So when we started initially talking about this, I was in the city of Reading and just driving through the new improvements that they did downtown and gave me some inspiration on the approach that we can take. Now, the city of Reading had a huge budget. They used pavers, lots of different aesthetic elements, very wide sidewalks, different textures. But what I specifically focused on was the planters and then, and the textures. So examples that we could transfer to the city of Waireka. Go ahead, next slide. So this right here is kind of trying to beautify your cultural centers, Minor Street and Center Street. What is not on here is potentially adding something to the crosswalks, but what you can see is textured elements at each intersection, at each corner. And also a soldier, it's called a soldier course edging. So right inside the curb would be what would look like a brick edging around the other textured elements, two different colors popping out, just adding some aesthetic elements. And we decided to try to do this on both Center and Minor Street. Next slide. So here are the examples. So on the left, that is a project in Old Chasta, California. So just west of Reading on 299. That's the soldier course edging that I'm talking about. So that's actually a stained sidewalk with the soldier course edging. And it looks like brick, but it's, it's not brick. So what that does is that significantly reduces costs for construction. And in the center, that center picture is in Los Molinos on 99. That is the south of Reading, sort of south of Red Bluff. And that is the textured concrete. So that would look similar to what we could potentially do at the intersections of Minor and Center Street. And on the right, that's a textured crosswalk, textured into the asphalt, and then with a color coating over it with the sealant. Next slide. So here's where we get into some dollar amounts. So on the right, you can see just before and afters, just kind of giving some perspective what it could look like. So the sidewalk on, at Minor Street, if you're looking south and walking towards Minor Street, is going to get widened. I forget how wide it is now. It's really narrow. But I believe it's going to six feet. And you can see how much, a little bit more room that gives the pedestrian. So it looks like the cost for the sidewalk work is approximately $70,000. We won't say approximately, let's go $70,000. And the cost for the textured crosswalks is $45,000. So you're looking at a total cost around $115,000. That, and that is for both intersections.
And can, may I, Mr. Mayor? I just wanted to talk about why we were talking about both intersections? Because as you know, we've been talking many years about making Minor Street one way. And then if people come off the freeway and go up Minor Street one way, then there would be signs and direction to turn left and then turn left and then go back on the freeway on Center Street. So those would be kind of key. That's the reason we had talked about both intersection.
Any more questions on this with this slide or Minor and Center Street? Because if not, we can move on.
I was just going to say that the, the way that we're going to be able to widen that really narrow sidewalk, right now only one person at a time can walk up there, is because there will not be a right turn lane.
Correct.
When, when Carrie said that the road's going on a diet, that's what it means. We're going to be losing a lane. But the good news is we'll have a wider sidewalk.
Have a wider sidewalk and I think a bike, a bike lane as well, I believe.
Right, right.
Next slide. Now, this is where, what originally brought us to the, the idea of adding some aesthetic elements. So we've got to start it now. So this is right in front, so we have Waireka Street on the right and I want to print out Tourist Street, Tourist Street on the left. So in this section with the road diet between Caltrans right away and the right away of, the adjacent right away is at our widest point around 20, approximately 20 feet. So that is a very wide sidewalk. So what we decided to do was how can we break up that sidewalk? So it's actually, what I want to point out here, that we have two slides that are very similar. And the reason is, is because what I wanted to point out is how the sidewalk tapers. When you're moving south, it tapers back to normal size. So most of the elements are going to be in that, on the right hand side, going, moving in the northern side, just a few on the left, because it becomes not feasible to add these elements. What we'll talk about, they're basically in-ground planters. Move to the next slide. So just slightly zoomed in, but this is the focus of the area. So we have a total of 27 planters that are pictured here. Will it exactly be 27 planters if we move on with this? That's not guaranteed, but this is with space and just an overall view of the, of the block. That's what we're looking at right now. So if you move on, please. The next slide. So this is what we're looking at. So if you remember from the, one of the very first slides, the, the in-ground planters that the city of Reading did on Market Street, it's a super simple, easily maintainable planter. Two different types of plants. Just a tree and some ornamental grasses. There's going to be five foot by 25 foot in-ground planters that'll have two rows of plants with a single tree and three foot by 20, a three foot by 20 foot in-ground planters with a single row of the grasses and an, and an ornamental, and a tree. So a total of 27 planters with the cost of irrigation included. So I mean, you can see, we can see the prices there, 3,500 for the large planters, 2,500 for the smaller ones. There's many, there's more smaller planters. And it does include plants.
It does.
I believe so. Yes.
Does what?
Uh-oh.
Too ladyy already said it.
No, that's right.
The plants, I mean, yeah. Um. So the total cost with the irrigation included is you're looking at for all the planters around 100 grand, 103,500. What's that? Yeah, go for it.
I just want to, the irrigation, I do have the little asterisk next to it. That is just a stub at this point in time. We don't know where your water comes from. All we can do is put some pipes under the sidewalk, stub it out to the planner and take it to our right away or something. So the cost is very in the air, because we have no idea how much pipe we're actually would have to lay. And then you would have to come in later and actually do the valves and the backflow preventers and all that, all the stuff.
So if, if we do this right, and if we do our water and sewer and the pipes that go under, you know, at the same time that, that Caltrans is doing the street, that I think that we can do the planning so that it would coincide.
I think we could too.
That's my hope, so that we wouldn't have to come in afterwards. We could do it simultaneously.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that $1,000 is just your pipe.
Yeah, because coming in afterwards, the cost would be extreme. So that's, that's why we're having this conversation, because if it's an option we want to do, we need to do it now or forever hold our peace.
Right.
It's probably going to be enough to cover the plants that she wasn't thinking about.
Probably. And then, and then the total cost of improvements on the next page.
So sorry, interrupt one more time. Just so everybody's clear where this location is. Not, if everybody's familiar with Waireka Street and, and Tourist Street, that is in front of the old Shop Smart, Rite Aid and Sears building on the west side. On the east side is county behavior, or excuse me, human services, old hospital in that area is what this is.
Public health, right.
Is what all this area that we're talking about right now, the other spot, well, obviously it was Minor Street, which everybody's familiar with that. I just wanted to clear that up, so everybody knows where we're, exactly what we're talking about. And yeah, because that's the one stretch of sidewalk, like Logan's saying, is, I think he just told us last time, it's going to be 23.5 feet wide, because I think is what I remembered pretty clearly. So it's, so it's very, it's a
It's wide, it's a wide sidewalk.
That's why we thought that landscaping should, I mean, we should have something to break that up a little bit. We also talked about, you know, the possibility, the possibility of doing the, we call it the food trucks. But what we found out from Caltrans is that food trucks, it's not possible to have food trucks on a state highway. It would have to be on the private land side, so on the other side. So we can still work on that simultaneously while they're working on the streets. Shelley wanted to ask a question.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, Shelley, when you do that, we're going to have to have you come up to the microphone. I'm sorry. Anybody that wants to speak, I need to have you come up to the microphone, so everybody that's not present can hear the questions.
Shelley Davis, Director of Public Health. We are at 810 South Main Street. We take up a very huge portion of that picture on the other side. So my question is, with these wider sidewalks, is there going to be parking? Because we have parking all day long in front of our building. And if we're going down to one lane and we have 23 foot sidewalks, where's everybody to park? That's my question.
It will be, he'll
If you want to move back a few slides, I'll show you. I, I could have written it in there. One more. So there is on where the public health area is, or throughout the whole picture of what we're seeing and throughout, I believe, a good portion of the project are bike lanes, separated parking, bike lane, and then driveline. So in between the bike lane and the sidewalk is your parking.
Okay, I see that.
And it would be parallel parking.
Yeah.
And that's what they have now, yeah. And that would work, right?
And I want to, I throw in another asterisk, as far as exact location of the planters, exact color of concrete. All of these images are conceptual only. It's just to kind of give an idea of what could potentially happen. So the total cost, I think, was, I missed that, less two, two
With Minor Street, yeah.
Two eighteen five.
Two eighteen five.
I think, I'm sorry, Debbie, I think you had a question.
Yes, on that slide, we were just looking at discussing the parking in front of the health department. Um. What were the factors that you used to determine parallel parking as opposed to that
Angle parking?
Because I know sometimes I don't parallel park in the first shot. I don't know about the rest of you, but because there's only one direction of lane on each side, you're going to hold up traffic. So what was the reasoning behind that?
Travis?
Travis's turn. Travis's turn. He was trying to be cognitivo in the back.
So when we took out, we, right now you guys have two lanes in each direction, two northbound, two southbound. We took out one of those lanes to do a traffic calming. We don't do diets, nobody likes diets, but it's a traffic calming. When we did that, we came up with 24 extra feet. And when we did that, we were able to pull those sidewalks in. The thing that we were struggling with is a lot of times, it's very easy to pull into those parking spaces, but then you have people trying to back out and it's hard to see bikes coming through there and then getting back in lane into traffic. So there are some pros and cons, and we just had to weigh out those options. We felt that the community was used to parking the way that they are currently. So putting it back in that same configuration would be a little bit more e- easier for the community to adapt to. So I know that you could mention some very good points of doing the full end, kind of diagonal parking, but then there were the cons that came with it. And that's kind of where we weighed those out and came up with the conclusion of parking parallel.
Okay. This I'm getting better.
Does that work?
I'm not a safety hazard.
Plus the fact that that bike, that bike lane is the next one over. And we probably don't want to be bike, backing over any bikers, right?
No. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Any other questions as far as the aesthetic improvements?
Well, I don't know about anybody else, but the, the thought of 25 foot sidewalks without anything breaking it up was kind of, I was, I was trying to think, you know, what we could do with that that would be attractive, which is when Logan came up with some ideas that, that, you know, you can see what they're doing in other communities that are fairly inexpensive and, you know, and that work and that are low maintenance. So I think, I mean, and plus, I just like the idea because shrubbery and trees just kind of soften.
It's inviting.
It's inviting, exactly. It's just more inviting to the community rather than having just concrete, you know.
Or gravel, but if, if, actually, I'm thinking in the long term, if we have issues with vandalism, we can always pull it, but colored gravel in, but my first choice is green.
Yeah, right. Right, I agree.
So what, what the thought of was in the planters was pretty much identical to what Mark, they did in Market Street. So in the planner would be obviously a planting medium, so you can grow your plants. But the other material is a decomposed granite. And then making it so where there's a little bit of a lip on each end to keep that decomposed granite within the planter.
We also discussed pavers, but I was shocked at how much pavers cost. The cost would have gone up.
The cost is quite high, yeah.
So Logan, too, on, on our initial meeting here a while back, we were, also I have some pictures of more drainery and whatnot on Minor Street. Is, is that still something that is an option or not?
What we decided on the Minor Street was there's too many utility conflicts below underground. Also, not enough space. And what we talked about this far into the project, if we wanted to add space, we would have to create a separate island so that we would, we wouldn't have to change the drainage profile. So that's where all, I mean, as a landscape architect, I don't think of any of that stuff. So I go to the engineers and they tell me like, you got to look underground too. So, and there's, are, there's lots of stuff that goes into those intersections or those, those portions. And so at Minor Street, it's just not feasible at this point, Minor Street, Center Street, to add vegetation in those intersections.
Because it's narrow?
Because it's too narrow and there was the thought of adding some space with the bowl bout, creating more space. But like I said, we would have to cut into, we'd have to, it would be, it would, wouldn't, it wouldn't be a true bowl bout. You'd have to cut in so that the water storm drainage would, would still drain its, in its appropriate area.
Yes, Debbie, I think you had a question.
I, well, not a question, a statement. I actually wouldn't want it to be so busy at the corners that it was distracting to the driver.
And that would be distracted. I was looking at the picture, that was a picture that we had there.
And that is something that we have to consider too for safety, is the site distance for drivers pulling out. They have to be able to see.
But I could see where that would be a distraction on Minor Street too, trying to pull out or whatnot, especially as of right now, because Minor Street being, is a two-way street and then coming off and hitting Nate Street that way, and having this trees and shrubbery there would probably be too much of a distraction too. So as close as it is, even as attractive as it looks, it's probably would not be as safe as it should be.
Great. Any other questions?
Okay. I, I thank you for all of this information. I really appreciate you putting all this together, Logan. But Mr. Mayor, I, I also know that the Economic Development Council is here and they have some information.
Yes, that's, I was hoping so.
Regarding being more welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Logan.
Thank you, Logan.
Good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity to make a contribution to this important decision that you're making. My name is Tanya Douse, and I'm with the Siskiyou Economic Development Council. And I'm joined by my colleague Cory Hayden. And we were tasked with providing just a little bit of information to illustrate some of the return on investment as you contemplate making a contribution to this project to further leverage it for Waireka's benefit. And in that regard, Cory and I have just a few comments to share with you. And this will be followed up with a formal report. Well, we'll talk a little bit more about them. I'm going to let Cory on it.
Sure. Thank you guys so much. We've been privileged to work with the team over a couple meetings and have city staff also be in our office space to talk about the project. And the first time Logan put the slide up of that experience at the highway in Minor Street, we went aha. We see what this can be like. So that was really unique, the first day that he brought that first composition slide. There's a term now being widely used called the 15-minute city in terms of what a person can do by walking in your city over 15 minutes and all the things they can experience. And so this project specifically, I think greatly expands just the Minor Street experience to create a walking experience for pedestrians. They'll have a better experience walking to the wine bar via the main street or bottling or small and nature's kitchen. And so those are just a few anecdotes that I see romantically when I see the project and how exciting that is. But in terms of the, the scope of the build and the economic, I guess, impact that will occur during the build and then the traction occurs after, there are dollar estimates that will go to that investment that we will be able to relay in the report. But this project will boost our local prosperity. It will create a better environment for those bordering businesses that are going to benefit from this aesthetic aspect right in front of their shop or restaurant or, yeah, facility. It increases the land and property values for a very expansive mileage in our city, which is very exciting. It certainly promotes tourism as the entire Main Street becomes a destination to drive to and not through. Logan used that term of, or maybe it was Travis, the, the calming of the traffic speeds and that slowdown of that traffic will lead to increased business visits, increased pedestrians, just increased usage of our, of our main street. So we are very excited and very supportive of the economic return of that activity. During the project, this will impact some of our sectors in a very positive way. Just in terms of the research that has been provided to us, we can predict that restaurants, retail, real estate, service professionals, construction and healthcare services will all benefit from both the project activity and the results after. So we want to share a little bit of that. Tanya's going to throw some numbers also at you, and we really look forward to sharing the pending report with you this week.
Tanya. Thanks Cory. So when tasked with trying to provide you with some good information as you contemplate your decision, we hired the team at Chico State Center for Economic Development to do an economic impact analysis of the result of the project. And they have on staff resource, research analysts and PhDs in, in economists. So that, we, we're not able to get the report completed for you today, but it should be done like literally within just a couple of days. That being said, Cory and I did get a quick glimpse at the first draft, and I want to share with you just some high level cursory numbers to, that is going to show you some economic return on investment. So in the year, first three years looking at the project, they estimate that there will be 498 jobs created per year. And that includes both direct employment and indirect employment. So those are both direct jobs involved in the construction of the project as well as those induced through increased retail and service purchases and activity. If you consider that over the three-year span of construction, your total gets to 1,300 jobs, over 1,000 jobs total, and approximately 12 million in direct taxes to state and local governments. Once this report is completed, we'll get it to you as quickly as, I'm sorry, we couldn't have it. It was just not enough time to get it out of them so that you could have it this evening. But we'll get it to you as soon as we can in the next couple of days. And it will have the endorsement of their team of professionals, so you can have some comfort in those numbers. And we've provided this type of reports for you previously, so have some information about, you know, it's an economic modeling report to just give you a good estimate to understand that your investment is going to actually return a much greater dividend at the end. And it actually, right off the bat, right during the construction phase. So, yeah, thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you. Thank you guys.
Yes, thank you.
We appreciate all your time that you guys put on this. It's from day one, when, when Joan and I were there, they were just like on it, man, just let's, let's research this, let's do this, let's do this. And we're like, getting so excited about that, you know, knowing that we got the team getting so excited about that, you know, knowing that we got, uh, the team out there that has our backs and looking for the best interest of the city. So it's, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I just want to ask Carrie one, one question if I may. Carrie. You and I had talked about this and I'm probably going to get the figure wrong. But the investment by the state, by Caltrans in this whole Highway Three project is twenty-seven million or billion?
Million.
You told me. Is it million? Okay. So I was right. Twenty-seven million.
Uh, let's see. I, it's more than that. Yeah, so the total investment of the state in this, in this project between staff resources and the construction itself, we're looking at seventy-six million dollars.
Seventy-six million dollars. So my point being that this is probably the largest project that's going to be done in our city.
I think the courthouse ended up being bigger.
That courthouse, okay, between the courthouse and this, but, but they're both like, uh, like a shot in the arm, if you will, for us. For our economy as far as bringing, uh, beauty to our area. And the, the reason that we were focusing on Minor Street, Center Street is that's when people get off the freeway in the center of town, that's the first thing that they see. And we want it to be a pleasant first impression. And so we were looking at, uh, the most economic ways that we could find that would make it attractive. And, and Logan, um, uh, and Carrie and, and Travis helped us with that. So honestly, I have to say that this is actually, uh, less than what I thought it was going to be. Not that I'm saying that I want it to be more, I don't. But, um, I did want to ask you Carrie about this, about, uh, the funding of this. Now, is this, this total cost funding, is this something, I know that Dwayne and I talked about this, is this something that would be doing a lump sum? Or is this something that we can finance as the project goes on?
So what I found out was that, um, we could either, we can do either almost. It's either the lump sum or I can invoice you throughout the project as these elements go in. Say, you know, Minor Street is done, we spent this much, here's your bill for the month.
Which would be a little bit easier on our budget, I think.
Well, is, I think we, I think we discussed too, at, at this point, um, with, by doing it with the payment plan basically, that quite possibly there might be something that we could find some type of grants or something. In that progress of doing it and being able to use those in conjunction to it, so.
That's true.
Yeah, there was a, um, I don't know what the percentage is, but there's a percentage of a upfront deposit, so to speak, but I think it's
Right.
Not substantial compared to the rest of that, so.
Yeah.
Cause there's, this whole project is gonna be, uh, a thing that we're, there's gonna be some unseen things that we're talking about anyway. So there is gonna be uh, X amount of billing that's going on through the whole process anyways, no matter what. So this is not like gonna be a shocker, we're adding X amount to it too. Did I think our discussion tonight, I think and I, I can't speak for the rest of council, but I think tonight would be, we need to, like I said, decide what that looks like. Um, and what, how far we want to take it, you know, they're showing us some examples. Colors or something that can be changed. So, uh, in other words, the reason why I bring it up, colors is why is, um, on Minor Street. A prime example, the sidewalk area would be something that stamped within the gold, golden color. So a yellow color or golden color, cause that's what people will be coming into is Minor Street, which is a golden city, so. So that's something, you know, we can take into consideration too. So, you know, when he's, we're showing some of these pictures. Those are things, crosswalks or going across the street or another things that we can, that can be different colors too. So don't think that we're tied into, you know, certain colors, certain aspects that he's showing us here. These are just ideas. We can change the colors, we can change whatever we want, you know, pavers, whatever, you know, the, the, we're talking about the planter boxes.
Right.
We, it's not something we have to do, planter boxes, but keep in mind, um, if we do pavers, the pavers are actually more money.
Right.
Um.
I like the stamped, I've only heard stamped concrete, but you said stamped asphalt?
Stamped asphalt for the crosswalks.
Yes. I would like to make sure that all of the consistency and color so that the crosswalks are all the same color. Uh, the curbs same.
Yeah.
And the other thing we didn't cover are the, um, bus stops. What's gonna happen with the bus stops on our main street? Um, the same units put in, any more awning? What are we doing?
Yeah, we, we walked the town with Stage and they identified locations where they want new shelters, move the other shelters, new semi-seats, as they call them and um, and new locations and stuff. And so we've, we've walked the, the town with them. As in Stage.
Oh, oh, stage.
Yes.
And the shelters and the seats. They get funding from the state for that too. They get funding from the state for those. I'm, I'm sure, I'm on.
I am guessing they have some kind of funding, yes. Yes.
Are they gonna put more shelter, more of a shelter?
They have some of them, but not all of them are sheltered. So we could, we could probably talk to the new director. You know, and find out if there's any funding. There is additional funding. They found out there's another seven hundred, maybe two thousand through the ARA. Which, ARA, uh, that's another thing that I wanted to ask, Mr. Mayor. Josh, you're here. I hate to put you on the spot, but I'm gonna do it anyway. So, uh, Josh, I know that you're kind of our local expert on the ARA, the American Revitalization Plan that's coming down from the feds. Do you think that, that that plan would have any kind of funding that we might be able to use for this? It's, um, um, it would be for beautification, but it's also for improvement of our town.
Right. So the, the American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA, um, is very specific about what it is earmarked for. Um, there, there are some wider brought, wider things that we can do through the revenue loss model. Uh, through the provision of government services, but this wouldn't fall under that hat. And then the other, you know, true earmarked projects, um, i- it's just, it's not gonna necessarily fit in with what's been authorized under, um, ARPA. I, I don't see much wiggle room in there when, uh, ARPA talks very specifically about, uh, water, wastewater and then direct impacts of COVID. So this, ARPA funds are not gonna be something we could utilize here.
That'd be a stretch. But there are other funds available for grants at the state level, I'm sure.
Uh, I'd have to do some research, but. So.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Yes, thank you. Yes, Shelley.
Shelley Davis, Director of Public Health. So I would be amiss if I didn't bring up the issue of the beacon lights for the two crosswalks that cross Main Street. So just wondering if there's a plan for that. The one that goes between the old medical center pharmacy over to Ace Hardware. I mean, we've had deaths there. The one that goes from Human Services over to the coffee shop is another crazy crosswalk. So I was wondering if there was any, like, discussion around that.
So I think, uh, Carrie was gonna comment on that. Thank you, thank you Shelley, cause yes, it's, it's a huge concern right now of us, a number of different places, yes.
Yes, so at the, um, Brew Street, that is a temporary one that we agreed with the, the city before that, we would put that in until time of construction. Um, it is a temporary spot. Um, the permanent locations are not the solar powered. They would be hooked in. Um, so, you know, they wouldn't fail or walk away. And, um, so we, as a partnering, we are requesting ten thousand dollars per location. Um, they do cost about twenty-five to thirty grand. And so that would be, you know, your share of it.
Ten thousand, yes.
Ten thousand instead of the twenty-five to thirty thousand, right?
Correct.
And the reason that it's less is because it would be doing it half the time the road was going in, is that why?
Um, it was just, it was generally, we'd have liked at least half. Um, but in part of partnership and knowing that there are, it is a big spot, especially at Brew Street. Um, we are just requesting that much.
On the Brew Street, we had a death there and then there was another death that was down.
At Nature's, yeah.
Walker, at Nature's Kitchen. And then, um, Shelley said that there's been a death or a scene, uh, in front of the pharmacy.
Yeah. I don't recommend too many
Yeah.
of them through your town because fibers will get immune to, to it and, yeah.
So, this is, I, so every, the rest counts in those too. I had this discussion with Don, our city attorney. Um, and basically, and this is, I'm sure Carrie is gonna disagree with this, but Don stated that um, that it's basically is, let me, I'll finish the whole thing before anybody jumps in. That it's basically Caltrans' responsibility if that area is identified as a problems area. So in other words, um, these areas that are, we're talking about, unless they have been identified as a problem area. Then it does fall on us. If they're identified as a problem area, Caltrans has identified him as a problem area, it falls on them. Just so the rest of council knows that, that I had this discussion with Don.
The cost falls on them.
The whole responsibility falls on them. So.
What determines that classification as a dangerous area?
I, that, that part I don't know because that's the thing that we have to just, we have to figure that out. If we haven't, now according to Don, there's, has been that kind of identification over there by the Valero. Because we have set up lights there, even though they're solar powered, that, so that basically has been identified as a problem area. So the rest of them, I don't know where that falls unless we have, uh, some type of study done that that could be, you know, something that falls back on Caltrans. Sorry.
McCoy, if you recall, when we met, um, uh, over, uh, with Caltrans in that parking lot across from Valero. They talked about how the studies are done to, to identify whether these are areas of concern. And none of the air, none of these areas are areas of concern. They don't rise even to the level of some of the areas in Reading. So that, none of these areas are areas where Caltrans would be responsible for putting in the, the, um, the lighting system and all that kind of stuff. So cause we talked about that. And then the other thing we haven't covered tonight is we talked about how dark it is at Nichols and Valero and putting in additional, uh, a couple additional streetlights, one on each side to light it up there because sometimes um, even with the fleecing lights, you don't see the person. And as I said already, um, I've seen four now people just shoot through the fleecing lights during the day. And, and the bicycle or the person, pedestrian has to just hold up. You know, people have become immune to it already, so.
Yep, so.
But I just, I don't think, cause you're talking about the cross, lighting the crosswalk, you know, twenty fingers, that the person that was hit, it was dark, but he was not in the crosswalk.
No, he was. I, I.
On which one?
There was two of them though.
Which one?
Yeah, we've got two different. Yeah, that last one. Yeah, but we'd also did have one, just, I think I sent that out to the rest of council that did have that one over by the old hospital.
But it was so dark there.
The person ended up dying, so.
That's what Shelley.
Yeah, so dark.
Exactly.
Well, what they told us at that meeting, oh, I'm sorry, it's in Bay Bay, was that, um, what, what I heard, uh, from, not you, but from the other gentleman at Caltrans, oh, it was from the director. They said that, uh, uh, that sometimes the accidents that, you know, they go through, our police department reports to, uh, CHP. CHP then, uh, puts their report together and then it goes to Caltrans. And they said that that, that process takes over a year, a year to eighteen months, is what they said that day. Um, so oftentimes it takes a while and we've had these, these things happen and these deaths happen just within the last few months. So it hasn't even gotten up to that level yet.
No. Debbie?
I would actually, I'm jumping ahead here after the discussion. I'd like to see the safety beacon things at, number one, where the first one already is and the other one that crosses in front of the, uh, coffee shop because, um, I do see people crossing all the time. But I think if we have two in front, in that same area, I think it would be lost. But two, I certainly see them.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree.
So one was Brew Street and what was the other one?
In front of the coffee shop.
They can't rest account. Paul McCoy's not here, he can't hear you, so we have to, I'm sorry.
Be farther because I'd like to discourage people from crossing or drawing.
Yeah, we get, we get in big trouble.
We get in trouble, yeah.
Sorry.
Does that work? For the Caltrans, what I'm wanting to know is, at the Valero, go both ways, south and north. If you could put rumble strips, you know, when you're going to Montague, there's those huge strips and I don't care where, who you are, what you're doing. Your attention is right there. And your heart is, you know, you're paying attention. And people aren't gonna get used to it. They're not gonna forget about it. They'll bitch about it a lot, but it's worth it because it brings your attention to slow down.
Yeah.
Because by the time someone's in that crosswalk, you're going, people go sixty miles an hour and you're saying calming? There is nothing calming about this town. If you live here, you know. Sixty miles an hour, Fourth Street, Oregon Street, Main Street, it doesn't matter. That will slow them down.
So, put in conjunction to that, um, that what she's talking about calming, um, everything is going to a one layer.
I know that.
So that will, that does automatically calm things down. So in, in that sense, yeah.
Yeah, now sixty, now you're going fifty. Okay.
Well, I wish, but it's, uh, and unfortunately I usually get stuck behind somebody going twenty in the, in the thirty-five zone.
Oh, just to, to answer her, cause she addressed it. That is something I can definitely always take back to our traffic operations and safety group. Um, they are, they do have to follow certain guidelines by, by law. And there's certain elements that they can't, but I can always relay that message.
Yes, Shelley.
Again, Shelley Davis, Director of Public Health, thank you. Um, in regards to the crosswalk that we were talking about from Human Services over to the coffee shop, yes, that is probably a little more populated than the other one. We have to take into consideration that we are, um, the Health and Human Services Agency right there, we have so little parking that families that bring their families to Human Services for services are parking across the street. So we're running across the street with a mom, two or three children and a stroller to get to Human Services. So that is a very big concern for me that we watch this all the time. Because they're parking in the empty lot across the street because there is no parking in front of Human Services.
So is that the same spot that they're talking about between Sears and the coffee shop and Human Services?
Well, it's basically, it's the one between Public Health and Human Services. Where, where the building turns white. There's a big crosswalk and it actually ends up at the south end of the coffee shop.
Right.
Sears is a little north of that, in the shopping center.
Yeah.
Yes, and so it's, it's, that's the area that I'm referring to. And because of the poor parking, right? There's so many people that work in that building, we don't even have any place to park. So that's part of the problem.
Behind the building.
The whole building is just packed. We've got them in every little nip and cranny packed. So that means they also take up the front and then anybody that needs to go to Human Services can't actually get there. So they park across the street.
When you say across the street, Shelley, where you said across the street at?
Across the street would be over by the coffee shop.
Right? It can, in front of Sears, in front of, I think there's now an Asian market right there. But that's even Rite Aid is a little bit north of where I'm talking. Because there's that whole section right there that there's not a lot of people that are there all the time. So they park there and they park along the street in front of the coffee shop and run across at that point.
You said empty lot, I was thinking of the whole shopping mart and all, isn't that pissed off?
Well, I have an idea. I have an idea. Has anybody thought about consolidating those two crosswalks into one? In other words, instead of on this end and this end, just make it.
I think one should be eliminated.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Would you, would you like us to bring the picture back up so we make sure we're all talking about the same crosswalks? Arthur, if you don't mind bringing that presentation back up. Um, let's see, it would be for the, is that it?
Yeah, it's the island.
There's the, yeah, there's. We're reconfiguring that.
Right.
Yes.
So I'm gonna throw a couple things, other things out there. At least I get to take off my mask. That's a plus. Okay. So a couple of things to think about is right now when you guys are playing Frogger Grin across the road, you have the two lanes in each direction. We are gonna be taking one of those away. That's gonna help the time because now you're only crossing three lanes instead of the five. Um, in Logan's picture, you can kind of also see there's a little bit of a bulb out right there. So when you have a pedestrian standing out on front of that bulb out, they are easier to identify. Like right now, your sidewalk's pretty much straight through there. And if somebody's just standing there talking, you can't tell if they're trying to cross the street. Nobody in their right mind is standing in that little bulb out unless they want to cross the street. So that's gonna help people kind of trigger that. The other big issue is when you have the two lanes going in the northbound direction, you have the first car that stops because they can see the pedestrian there. Well, that second car doesn't know if this guy's just trying to park or what he's doing. And so they just blow right through that crosswalk or not looking for the pedestrian. So as soon as you take it down to one lane in the northbound direction or one lane in the southbound direction, it does slow down traffic for accidents like that with pedestrians. That being said, the rapid flashing beacons for ten grand a location, that's a smoking deal.
It is, it is.
Yeah, so. Yeah. So I'm just throwing that out there. That is a pretty good deal. Uh, I would keep in mind though that once we do that traffic calming through here, they may not be as impactful as you guys are hoping for. Like right now, when you go out there, you definitely could see like it, it would be difficult to cross through there. That's a lot of lanes of traffic to kind of get through. But once this traffic calming comes through, you will see a major improvement from that. And that's kind of what our traffic guys are saying is, you know, once we do that, that's kind of the first step. The downside though is I'm like, if we can get rapid flashing beacons in here for ten grand, like that's a pretty good deal to do right now. Cause normally I've seen them go out on individual projects for over a hundred grand for location. I was gonna say, I'm pretty sure the last project I put them in on, they were a hundred.
Wow.
Uh, so the ten, I don't come up with the estimate on that. So ten grand.
Smoking deal.
I was like, almost like they dropped a zero off of that or something. I don't know, but.
And that's okay, cause you already told it.
Anyway, though, I just kind of want to throw that part out there. Um, the Bruce Street, um, it's gonna be a similar situation. Like you're not gonna see that impact as much on Bruce Street. So I don't want to influence your decision, but I think the Bruce Street one, if you guys were tied on money, I would look at that location first. And then these other two, um, I'm not disagreeing with you whatsoever. I know that these are great locations for those rapid flash beacons, but, uh, if you can only afford to get one of them, I do think you will see improvements with just the traffic.
Um, how many cars? Can I have that? Okay. How many cars, if you put them, you know, diagonally, you know, not parallel, how many cars could you fit in front of the, uh, what car?
Leave the math, Travis, right now.
I meant, have you considered? Cause you can put a whole lot more than parking, parallel parking. If they're already having problems and we've got children's, you know, families with children's coming across that road, we don't want that. Eventually they're gonna get run over. Even if you do, calming. You know, so if we could get rid of the twenty foot sidewalks, we don't need, that's ridiculous. On that side and put cars parked, you know, it would be much better.
Yeah, I, I think Travis was being gracious earlier. Across the state, we have eliminated that diagonal parking because that backing up without being able to see oncoming traffic, we have too many incidences of collisions backing up in that way. When you're parallel parking, you have your mirror and you can see. So it's actually increases your collision aspect by parking diagonally on our highways. And I think in this case, we have bikers coming through too. So.
I thought about that too, but I was still thinking about the, you know, we gotta do something with this parking situation. Council, think about that.
There's an empty lot nearby, I'm sure for.
Yeah, we're already looking at that lot. Yeah. So then my next question to you, Kerry, and Travis and Logan would be, so how soon do you need a decision on this? Because we've got our budget, budget workshop coming up, uh, the first part of September. So we're going to have a workshop like the end of October and then we're going to adopt it hopefully the first part of September. So when do you need a, a final say?
Yes, tonight, tonight we needed at least a commitment. We're not writing any checks tonight, but we need to commit that the city is gonna find a way to come up with certain elements so we can start putting them in. If it falls out, it falls out. Or if we disagree on who pays for what, we can settle that later. But right now, I really need, I need to start that co-op agreement now. So I need at least a, yes, we're interested in these items. Let's start drafting it up.
So now I think that's a key thing. Thank you for, for saying that Kerry, cause we can say yes to some of these things. Obviously we're not gonna get carried away and go, oh, I want this, I want this, I want this. But if we realistically look at it going, okay, this is a, a good option. Let's do it. Let's go ahead with it. And then we go through our budget, we go things and all of a sudden we're like, oh gosh, no, we can't do that. We can pull it out. It's just, they need to go ahead right now to do that, but it can get pulled. So.
I actually think it's been a conservative approach.
Oh, it has been.
So I'm good with it.
Yeah.
Oh, Caltrans has been great working with us on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, so like I said, some of the decisions we need to make for sure is the planter boxes versus the pavers and stamped sidewalks or whatever in those, in those wide areas. So those twenty plus foot sidewalk areas, that's something we have to decide on. Tonight, basically is what I'm getting at is we need to decide if we're gonna do the plant, planter boxes initially are the cheapest way to go. Maintenance wise may not be as cheap as, as some of the others, obviously, because there'll be a certain amount of maintenance. But keep in mind, this, the stuff that we'll be planning in those things will be a low maintenance type of items too. So.
Right. Yeah, I personally, I, I like the idea of using the, the street aesthetics and also watching out for the safety for our citizens. So if, you know, if we could go forward with these, these things that we talked about tonight, I think it's a great idea. So the Economic Development Council talked about, you know, how economically, how much money it may bring into our area. And Caltrans has been more than generous in the ten thousand dollars per, we're not gonna forget that. You know, that they've talked about, you know, cost sharing, which I think has been just, uh, more than generous. And we do appreciate that because we're a very small city with a very small budget. So, um, I don't know about the rest of you. To see this go forward.
Yes.
So in conjunction of that, um, with these, you know, we need to obviously consensus from the council, of what we want to see as far as planter boxes versus that. The other thing we also need to discuss obviously is the beacons.
Right.
Uh, how many we'd like to see with those. And two, I think we're deciding on that. And getting back to the beacons, you know, that, like you said, that is, is a killer deal, ten thousand dollars. If in the progress or process, Don gets creative, finds some loopholes in that, um, ten thousand dollar, even though.
The ten thousand dollar deal.
Exactly. So then that's, that's something I just wanted to bring that up that if he finds a way to say, hey, and talks to Caltrans is, nope, you guys, this is, this is this and this is this, that's what we have an attorney for. So.
Well, that's true, but.
But I think we should move forward. Yes, on, on the ten thousand dollars. Cause at this point in time, that's, that's cheap. If it saves somebody's life, that's money well spent. I don't care if it's a million dollars for a crosswalk. It saved somebody's life. I'm sorry.
To, to, just to be transparent, there is the, the maintenance side of that. Um, we already have a maintenance agreement for electrical. So all we would have to do is amend the current one and we already bill you for, I believe it's lighting, um, for a certain amount for electricity. And so you would, there would be a nominal increase in your electric bill for that. Um, the other killer deal, uh, as Mr. McCoy pointed out, was the lighting.
Yes.
And I, I also quoted ten thousand dollars for each of those lights. Ten thousand.
Ten also.
Well, like you said, we can work out the details later and I, I think safety first.
Yes, absolutely.
I like the aesthetics too.
Yes. Said, safety, we, there's too much good stuff going on lately, especially Valero area. That's been ongoing problem. Unfortunately, it's part of those pedestrians are not using that crosswalk is part of the issue. But the one down by, uh, Human Services and stuff, it's, it's that latest one there. It's, that's, that was in the crosswalk. That was, um, it was not at nighttime. Um, it was all the elements were open and they, there was nothing to hinder that. You know, uh, vision or anything else. So it's just one of those things that.
People just go way too fast through there.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and then that's by bringing it down to a one lane situation. It will force them to slow down and I'm sure we're, we are definitely going to hear about that in the whole process.
I'm sure, but as was pointed out to me, when there's two lanes like that and it's coming down to one lane, which it does, it's almost like a race. They're trying to race to get ahead of the other one. And they're not looking at the.
No, especially, especially down there by Valero. It's, that's one that's bad. People pass on the inside because someone's driving, you know, twenty miles an hour on the fast lane. And so they wanna pass him before they get trapped there further down. So. Yes. Yes, uh, Mr. McCoy, do you want to add something? So at this point, we are looking at, and I guess with council, we're looking at planter boxes, is this correct?
Twenty-seven of them.
Um, that's the other thing is we need to decide on that too. Thank you, Kerry, for bringing that up. We want twenty-seven of them. Looking at this picture, I honestly am, where it gets right in front of, it will be in front of the Sears building part of it. Um, Arthur, could you bring that back up? I'm sorry. There we go. Thank you. Um, I look at it in front of the Sears building there, just doing a single row and not double stacking it there, to be honest with you, would be my opinion.
Oh, you mean the one, two, three, four?
Yeah, the five there, just doing, just doing like three there.
On both sides to the street.
On both sides, yeah.
Yeah. A single row?
It looks cl- too cluttered to me. Yeah, thank you.
That would be.
I, I actually, I, I agree with you because once we actually do the roadway design part of that, you see the two driveways. As you look, it could be blocking your side distance. We actually have to check that part of it.
So we could cut the number down.
So where you have the cluster of five, at least the west side of the road, those front two trees, they look questionable to me.
Yeah, that's, that's, looks like, like.
Uh, Shelley had something to say too. Shelley.
Say it's a good thing I did not hold you to the last comment. You gotta come down.
They can't hear you if you're not talking into the microphone.
Here I am again. So there's a huge difference in aesthetic value in front of Human Services compared to across the street in front of the coffee shop. So that might be where if you don't want all those shrubs, because we have beautiful green lawn, we have beautiful trees. Right? So now why do we need, what is it?
Two, four, or five trees.
Nine, ten, eleven, eleven trees.
Yeah, that's true.
So that's something to think of too. You might not want those all there.
Thank you, Shelley.
It does. We could do without that side.
Not the whole side.
Not the whole side.
Not as many, just not as many.
It's like, like Shelley stated, there is trees there, but the sidewalk is so wide though. That's one thing we need to keep in mind. That section there is, I don't think it's a full twenty-three feet or whatever, but we're probably looking upwards, closer to twenty feet in that area.
We can, what we can also, I mean, like we, I mentioned, well, there, that, none of these locations are absolute as of right now. Um, there's still some sight distance issues we have to look at. Exact locations with sidewalks, entrances to buildings. Like right now, I see that those planters, those five that you're looking at in front of the, that, that sidewalk goes right there. So those, it can be moved. We can also take out trees. We don't have to have twenty-seven trees. We can have twenty-seven planter boxes on only some trees. There's still many options we can look at with, with, uh, location and plants. Twenty.
Going, gone.
So I would say just bumping the two and say, oh, we're eliminating four actually is what that'd be. So it'd be nineteen. Yeah.
Up to twenty. How's that? Up to twenty.
Up to twenty.
Up to twenty.
And the one in front of the sidewalk shouldn't be there. So. So that one should go to.
Yeah.
So I, I guess that's a good point though. We could say up to twenty and then we can work out some more of the details on that.
Sure, yeah.
I think so. I think that would, what is, what is the rest of council?
Right.
I trust his judgment. He knows what we want.
And between them, yes.
Go make it pretty.
So I, so I guess, yeah, we, we need to give them some type of idea on how many. So if we say up, up to twenty.
Yeah, yes.
That sounds fine. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McCoy.
If I might, do we need five planters in front of the old Safeway building?
Yeah, that's what we're just discussing, Paul. I don't think we need that many, no.
Right.
That would be, that would be at nine less and not seven. That would be nine.
Uh huh. Okay.
So, and then do the plants, are the plants the response and the planting the responsibility then of the city?
Yes.
The initial.
Yes.
And what do we, what, what do we, what do we see as a cost on that? The only reason I'm saying this is because we're looking at about a seven, eight hundred thousand dollar budget shortfall. If we can cut some things out, uh, we can drop it down to about three to four hundred thousand. This pushes us back up to a six hundred, six hundred and fifty dollar shortfall. And I just want to be realistic about what we're doing.
Yeah.
I want to be realistic about, about what we can afford.
No, absolutely. That's the thing we, we, we definitely need to consider because of our, our current financial status. We need to look in, look at all different avenues.
So what if we just did the trees and no planters?
Well, that's, the, 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 the stuff in them will be, you know, we have to figure out our responsibility. We could still tell Caltrans to do twenty planter boxes and and then we could, huh, well, we don't necessarily have to. We could do decorative rock. We, you know, at that point in time, but if we have everything there, if we have the, uh, water there and everything else there, at least it's there to move forward. But if we don't do anything, then you know, if we just say no on all that, then we have twenty foot sidewalks with nothing there.
It'll look really ugly. And we heard the C C saying that that's going to bring back.
It will be back some revenue, tax revenue.
Yeah, money to us.
Doing it is not an issue. It's a matter of what do the five of us on council, where do we want to take two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars away from in the budget? That's all that it requires. That's making a commitment to rob the budget somewhere else. Uh, and, and use it for this, which is something that needs to be done.
Yep. And the other thing like I, I, I mentioned earlier too, Paul, is there's, there is possibility of getting some other type of grants or funding in conjunction to this. So I mean, it's, there's no guarantees obviously. So you can't, you can't say, okay, there is that chance, but there is a possibility. So in the process of working this through, we might be able to come up with something and, and be able to have that money there to, to work it through. So.
Yeah. And this, this is not gonna qualify for ARPA because Brett and I've already talked about this. It will not qualify for ARPA. And ARPA would still, ARPA would still require us to come up with the money to pay for it. And then in the next. And then in the next year, ARPA would give you the money back for this year, it doesn't balance this year's budget and it can't be used to balance the budget, that's a bad thing.
Uh, Mister Mayor, I know that, in fact, uh, Carrie can probably answer this one, but I do know that the McConnell Foundation helped out downtown, uh, with, with, when they completely redid the streets and the sidewalks and everything. So the McConnell Foundation would be a source and that's private foundation money.
Yes. Yes, Debbie, Debbie.
Uh, we haven't talked about works of art either.
Right.
Beat me to it.
You just took the wind out of her sail.
Supervisor Nancy Ugrin, um, two things, I know I'm probably splitting hairs about the flashing beacons, but are those programmable for how long they flash?
I believe so.
Because I noticed when people are crossing at the, at the temporary one we do have up, they don't flash nearly long enough.
Oh, right, right.
Yeah, it should be, only be like that for eight per second or something.
Some of those people walk very slowly.
That's true.
Yeah. And also because there's a very long distance for them to cross at this point, but when we go down to two lanes, it won't be, it won't take them as long, maybe?
Yeah.
But they are, they are not too long.
Okay.
So just something to think about and, so planters. We don't necessarily have to plant and maintain all the planters if we could get, um, businesses or organizations to donate money and art into those planters for permanent stuff.
Yep.
So, you know, we've got some great artists in this community and we could do some fantastic permanent structures in those.
I'm trying to think of this city, I think it was, uh, Charlotte, North Carolina, where they have cows. They have decorated cows and different businesses that are down in different locations in the city, very colorful.
Right.
Very beautiful.
Yeah, there could be some fantastic.
Well, and, and it, it does bring up a good point, you know, we do have very talented, uh, you know, unfortunately, one of our, uh, one of our talented guys is getting, I'm sure, close to retirement age, Ralph Sterrett, you know?
But he has some great people that he's trained.
He is training up some.
And we have some wonderful students and we could showcase, you know, our high school students, we could showcase C O S students, we could bring in outside artists, we could do all kinds of stuff, um, that. Exactly.
Exactly.
There's all kinds of great people that we could showcase in those, so that's. So, but we could use those to showcase other things besides just spending the city's money in those, so just a thought.
And, you know, like, another thing too, to bring it up to, you know, the, as far as planter boxes go and maintaining that, because if we were to do the planter boxes or do the, any type of shrubbery or anything like that, um, you know, there is the main maintenance on our city, if we could do more artwork or something like that, it would be less on our city staff. The other thing to look at too is what they've done in other areas and, and I'll say no against this, but is they would get it in front of, like you were saying, businesses or whatnot and put the, kind of try to put the responsibility back on the businesses and it failed, so we don't want to do that. We either need to take responsibility as a city or do something that's a low maintenance or no maintenance as far as artwork. Um, because I did talk to some other individuals on this sort of thing, other cities and do it, have the responsibility, go to the, uh, business owners and stuff, is that, it does not work.
Yeah.
Creates, it creates a mess, yeah. Yes, Debbie.
I think you also need input from Caltrans on how much artwork you have up there because it's going to be very distracting to drivers and can cause accidents.
Oh.
On a ma- you're, right, you're on a highway.
That's true. Yeah.
I don't know what Caltrans says about that.
Yeah. Debbie, I think you have a comment?
Bike racks. We could, we could put a couple bike racks in because truthfully, I've seen all kinds of kids lay their bikes down to go to the coffee shop.
Well, I think, I think they have, you guys have bike racks, don't you, in front of?
Are, are bike racks allowed in Caltrans zone?
That would be an encouragement for that. They would have to give you the, yeah, or no, that one, I'm not sure.
Locally, because we have a little pull with city.
No.
Uh, within the Caltrans driveway.
Right away.
Like the twenty-foot sidewalk that's still.
It's still Caltrans, yeah.
So, uh, and I, I'm not sure who was talking, I think it was Paul.
That's Paul, yeah.
Um, same thing with the artwork, like, I think that we would be able to get that.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that, yeah.
All right, you just let me take my mask off, I can tell. Okay, um, Paul was on to something with that, um, you guys would have to get like an encroachment permit for that. Uh, but realistically, if it was a reasonable type of art, it probably wouldn't be an issue. Um, you'd have to be careful with the businesses, so like if you had a decorative cow and then they put a giant logo on it, it's advertising, it's saved right away. And that's kind of a no-no, like, can't really do that. Um, and then the other thing is you'd have to contain the size of it. So if we took one of these planters and we were assuming a tree was there, it may not impact our site distance, but if you put in some massive twenty-foot statue, which, I mean, I can't imagine you guys doing that. But again, you would have to apply for an encroachment permit, I don't think it would be an issue as long as it was something reasonable. Um, if you guys try to do like the Paul Bunyan statue over across the city, like, you know, that wouldn't work, but if you guys were doing something similar like you're jumping salmon or whatever, like something like that or gold miner, I don't know, whatever you guys come up with, that's reasonable. I would see an encroachment permit being a fairly easy process.
Okay. Debbie, yes.
May I suggest we go with the twenty, up to twenty trees and have the planters put in, but leave them unfinished and we can, we don't have to do everything now, we could do it.
As long as we have the water there, planter boxes there, then we can move forward with what we want to do there, I mean.
And the decomposed granite, isn't that what we decided on?
Yeah. Well, they need a little bit too.
So I think, I, so I guess we need to get back to the consensus again. And Paul, are you listening on this? I don't know where you stand on this, but as of right now, we're talking about twenty planter boxes, not necessarily having shrubbery and stuff like that in there, but at least having that as a, as an option and it can, if it worst case scenario, we, after we have our budget and everything else, this could be pulled. But we need to, if we're going to think about doing something right now, we need to move forward at this point in time, so.
Up to.
Up to, yeah, we're talking about up to twenty planter boxes.
No.
Twenty.
So many nine planters.
Oh, I guess I'm confused, I thought we're doing.
Yeah, on this, on this page, nine planters and thirteen in brown planters and, yes.
Those are all planter boxes. The shrubbery, all the shrubbery is planter boxes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The main street aesthetics. Talks about their numbers.
So the tree, everyone you see, every tree you see is a planter box.
No, he's, he's right, it says twenty-seven.
Right now, there's twenty-seven planter box.
Yeah.
Twenty-seven, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So I, let me just give you a kind of, i- in each planter box, so what you guys would be getting if you decided not to plant would be uh, decomposed granite.
Right.
With no plants.
Right.
We gave, we got the estimate as a lump sum, I can't tell you exactly how much plant would cost.
Oh.
I can't tell you exactly how much money you'd be saving if you didn't plant, but I don't see, I mean, I can't give you a number, but I can't, I don't know if you'd be saving that much per planter.
Significant amount to cause, I got you, that makes, that makes sense, yeah, because like you said, you start pulling just like any, anything in construction, when we give an estimate, we give an estimate as a full package deal, when people, when the customer starts pulling things out, it doesn't necessarily mean it drastically drops the price, it means they're just pulling something out, it may like drop the price a little bit. So, very good point, thank you. So, I guess.
If I may, sorry. Um, with the cost and your budget, if we do the invoicing, you wouldn't necessarily be hit with it the first year, we have a three-year project.
Right.
Right.
So it could, so finding the two hundred thousand this year would only be if you did the lump sum.
Right, we can budget it out for three years, we usually have two-year budgets, so.
Yeah.
You're getting close then, but.
So, the other part of this too is what, and especially this section, um, by, where all these planter boxes would be going, um, would, this section, what phase is that section going to be in? I knew she was going to do that. Be season two, so, so that's.
So twenty, twenty-three.
Sorry. You want to get your mask off and get anywhere.
I do.
So Paul, so Paul can hear what you're saying.
Uh, so, uh, so this is in segment three, it is a very big segment, so, uh, realistically, it would go into, but there is, in season two, but there is a chance with this one being so big that they only complete a portion of it and then do.
Go into season three possibly, so then that would, that would even drag out a little bit further yet, so. This does buy us some time to really look at the budget and figure out where we're at, then at that point in time, two years from now, so. Plus, if we, the other thing we got to look, looking forward to is we started doing some of these other projects, you know, and beautification, then we got to look at, like they, like you see comment on the, the tax base that, and down the road, and we need to keep looking at that going, if it, if it increases our tax base by quite a bit, then it's a no-brainer.
It's going to help considerably, right?
So, thank you.
I think.
If, uh, I've got a question for Caltrans, this is, uh, Councilman McCoy. Uh, if it's broken up into payments, how many payments would it be and what would be the initial payment on this project?
Can we get a coupon book?
Um, what I'm told is as we build it, I would invoice you, um, so I can be lenient on my invoicing, it would usually be like a per month kind of a thing, but since we're talking lump sums here and I'm not, you know, you're not looking at our estimate for it, we're just coming to an agreed price, I would give you a lump sum, okay, it's about time that you paid up, we put in your rapid flashing beacon, it's ten thousand dollars, might be three more months before we get the next one in, so that's kind of hard to say like how often it would come your way, but it would, and you, you know, we can, we can talk.
What, what is, what would be the initial payment? You talked about that we, you know, you, you need some earnest money upfront, what would the initial payment be?
I don't know for sure, it is a cooperative agreement though, so we could negotiate that, whether it's a five percent or a ten percent or something along those lines. Um, we, really what the state needs is a good faith effort.
Yes.
You know, we don't have a set law that you have to pay us this much right now, it's, you need to show us that you are invested in this.
So getting back to that, what Paul asked.
I, I don't mi- I don't mind that, I just would want to know before we proceed totally with it, what, what the payments are going to, what the payment, what the payment's going to be. And then you're saying you would bill as you go along and, and as things, uh, are put in.
Yeah. No, I, I agree, Paul, this, uh, I guess we'd, that'd be something we'd need to know ahead of time and I know our attorney's going to want to know that ahead of time, obviously, too, that.
Is our attorney on?
I.
Is our attorney on the phone?
No.
No.
Our ci- our city manager or our budget person?
Uh, no. No, our city manager is that.
Okay. Okay.
So, I can have a cooperative agreement for you before your budget meeting.
Okay.
That will kind of at least spell out something and see if it's along the lines you think is.
Did you hear that, Paul? That she could have a cooperative agreement before our next budget meeting.
As long as I know it, an approximate of what we're going for.
Right. That makes sense.
Okay, so, so Mister Mayor, there is no action item on here tonight, this was strictly an item to be discussed, so I think probably you can give direction as you see fit for the council, that's my understanding.
Right.
Looking at, uh, the code of conduct that we were sent today, uh, you have the right to give direction independent of council, it sounds like we, it sounds like we're all behind it.
Got you.
But, but it's not an act, we can't, we can't have any kind of an action tonight. We, you just have to them what wants.
I would feel better if we had a consensus and yes, you can absolutely, after you get our consensus.
Yes.
Go for it.
Yes, correct.
Well, but the, the problem with that is, we're not calling for a consensus, we didn't even put discussion, possible action, we didn't put anything. We just said meeting with Caltrans to discuss beautification. So I, I would be concerned with, um, doing even an straw poll at this point in time, since we don't have anything to support that in our, in our agenda. I mean, I think, I think the mayor knows how we feel, uh, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Smith Freeman and, and I, and he feels, I think he feels in the affirmative and I think they all do, but I think doing a straw poll would not be wise, politically would not be wise. Or legally speaking.
Mister Mayor? Mister Mayor?
Yes, Mister Johnson.
Yeah, this is the city manager who's not here. So what I'm hearing is if there is some consensus on your part, you just want to ask for this item to be put on the next council agenda.
Correct.
For a discussion and possible action.
Yes. We could, we could give, we could give basically a partial direction, so Caltrans understands that this is what we're looking at and then our next city council meeting, we can vote on it and make it official.
Right.
Correct?
Uh, on one hand, you could do that, on the other hand, to be totally correct with what your, your codes say, i- it needs to be on your next agenda, regular meeting, and I'm sure Caltrans can rate that long. If not, they've certainly heard what you've said tonight.
So our next scheduled meeting is seven, yeah. I don't know, yeah, seven, yep, September seventh. The next council meeting, we can do, if, if we can do a special meeting, is that correct, Randy, Mister Johnson?
Yes. Yes.
So if we wanted to do a special meeting next week and actually vote on this, is, I guess, I guess my question is for, for Carrie, I, I would assume that is seven, September seventh, as an official, um, guideline, is that too late to where we need to do a special meeting or?
I can wait till the seventh.
Well, I think.
Okay, great.
Well, I think Caltrans can read between the line, Mister Mayor, and see that we're, uh, and see what we all feel individually about it and collectively, I think we're all, five of us on the same page. So all, all we would be doing is, is formally voting on it as, as the city manager.
Correct.
And then letting them know, letting them know the formal vote.
Right, so I'd still like to, tonight though, um, just hear from everyone, all of council on what their opinion is, um, then if not necessarily a consensus then, um, they get their opinion on what they feel, um, should happen, um, as far as moving forward and in that way that Randy, uh, Mister Johnson has direction for the next city council meeting, is that okay with the rest of council?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so at this point, um, I will just, I will say how I feel about the situation and moving forward is twenty, up to twenty count, uh, planter boxes. Two of the beacon lights and we, I guess the only thing else is the actual lighting.
And the crosswalks.
Yeah.
Minor street.
Right, correct. Minor incentives.
Sidewalk texturing, edging and crosswalk.
Correct. Correct.
Make it pretty.
What, the crosswalk will, um, the, the sealant on it will need to be maintained by the city and it's a, um, annual to every two-year reapplication for that sealant.
Yeah, so that's, that's something that's, yeah, definitely.
We will fix the texturing if we're ever going through with asphalt on there, we'll, we'll fix that, but you'll have to keep it pretty.
Okay, so I guess we, we have discussed that, um, Joan, is that what you'd like to see? I'm going to go, I'm going to go around the table here and.
Oh, I, I like what I've heard tonight, I think it would be definitely, um, I think it would make definite improvements in the looks of our town as people come into town and it would also provide for more safety on Highway three, which is also our main street, and I really want us to, to see us go forward with this and I look forward to being, um, this being on our next agenda.
Okay. Debbie here?
I agree.
Cory?
I agree as well.
Okay.
Everything looks great. Needing to move forward.
Mister McCoy, have you heard the discussion and do you feel that we're, um, that moving forward would be, in the next city council meeting, would be appropriate?
Oh, I'm very supportive of it, uh, as long as we, uh, and we're going to have to do one or the other, but as long as we, all the five of us know that we are going to have to come up with more cuts. We're going to have to make some hard decisions, uh, that may be unpopular and hopefully. uh, that may be unpopular, and hopefully, uh, we can do that and cut back some, some money, because, um, the, we're, you know, even if it's over three years, we still have, we've got another, another year of deficit spending that we don't want to go through, so.
Absolutely, no, thank you, no, okay, so.
So on the seventh, are we also voting on any lights?
Oh, correct, we do need to, we do need to discuss that, so, added lights in, obviously, the Brew Street area. Um, and that was another ten thousand, you said, correct, of per light.
And where else was the dark? That was the really dark spot.
So right now, we're actually looking at how many illuminators or electricors that are gonna be moving, those are the light poles.
Right.
Um, there's about fifty, fifty-one of them that we're gonna be adjusting, shifting, moving around for whatever reasons. One of the poles is actually right by Brew Street, right now, um, it's about, I'm gonna say it's about forty feet from the crosswalk, and we're gonna shift.
Shifted over, okay.
And that's the one on the west side of the roadway. So, I don't know if you're gonna get a lot of value by adding a light there, um, when we put that one back, I'll have our electrical guy shift it as far as he can, to the south, as close to that crosswalk as he can. On the other side, on the east side, it actually stagger, so, we have, we basically have them every three hundred feet.
Right.
And on the west side of the road, one heads pretty close to the crosswalk, on the other side, it's actually staggered, it's about a hundred and fifty feet on each side of.
Okay.
So, if you guys were going to add one, I would say you'd want to do it on the east side, and I don't know if you're gonna get much value if you add another one on the west side, to kind of help with that decision.
Yes, Debbie.
I certainly support one on the east side.
Yeah, I, I, I tend to agree with that. On the inside, yeah, but is there any other, yes, Mr. McCoy?
I'd like to see, like you said, one on the east side, um, at nighttime, if you're out driving, I would encourage him to, stay for an hour or so, hour and a half, and then drive through there, he'll see that the west side, uh, in the Nichols area is very, very dark, and that's where you see a lot of people, um, slamming on their brakes in the evening, because they cannot, you know, somebody will step out from Nichols, and they're not in the crosswalk, so I think it would behoove us to have one on the other, on the west side too, after they move, uh, the one closer to, um, what is that, uh, tr- um,
Bruce.
Terry Street or?
Yeah.
Bruce, closer to Bruce. I'd rather have more lighting or less lighting.
Yeah, I agree, I guess my next question would be if there's any other places, and I think I'd actually like to ask Shelley that. Um, if there's any in front of the buildings there, if there's any lighting that you can think of that would be more appropriate?
She doesn't work at night.
Yeah, she does. I've seen her burn it with a night off.
Okay, so I guess that would be the only thing I could say unless there's something.
We can, we can finalize on the seventh.
Well, but I think, you know, financially though, we, we're doing that, I mean, there again, we need to, figure that out too, so, if we're only identifying one light right now, then that's what we're identifying.
I think that the mayor should go up and down.
I will tonight.
Highway three at night, they prefer late midnight, right?
Yeah.
And check out the dark spots.
And it's part of. If you have a location and say it's in front of Nature's Kitchen or something, let me know, I think we have a hundred and eighteen, light poles out there, and we're relocating fifty-one of them.
Wow.
So if there's a way that we can shift one a little bit to kind of help out, we can look into it, I'm not saying it's gonna fix the problem, but like, for example, at the Brew Street, if we shift that another ten or fifteen feet, it's gonna definitely help out, so we might be able to look into that. No promises, but at least we can check.
So, and I guess the other thing, the question would be, in, in this process, um, you're gonna come forth and, especially working with obviously Matt Bray and all that, and showing us where those light poles, light poles are gonna go. I guess at that point in time, if we do identify something, can we then say, okay, hey, we don't, we look at this going, hey, this is a problem that you guys don't see it, and now it's too far a gap, we want one there, how does that work?
Um, so we actually have, they're called relocation plans, so we identified the fifty-one locations that need to be shifted, I actually have the plans.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, we got them done probably around Monday or Tuesday this week.
Oh, okay.
Um, I believe our utility coordinator sent the draft to Matt, um, I'm not sure, he's on vacation today.
Okay.
But, uh, not Matt, our utility coordinator.
Yeah.
But we do have our locations of where we anticipate to be shifting those, so I'm like, we have no problem sharing that information with you, they're technically your guys' light poles. We're just really nice and we're gonna go look for you guys.
So is that something that you could email us out then, and so we could look at that?
As long as you guys understand there are the draft ones, so this is what we're proposing, and then you guys kind of negotiate with us back and forth saying, yes, you want to move these ones, or no, you don't, for whatever reason. Um, I can't imagine why you would disagree with us moving them, but, again, these are just preliminary, just keep that in mind, so if you see the fifty-one that we're proposing to move, this number could go up or down, just depending on as the project evolves.
Okay.
But we have a pretty solid set of which ones need to be.
Okay, right.
But yeah, I can send that, yeah, um, just knowing it's a preliminary one.
Could you send it to Arthur, and then Arthur could send it out?
Yeah, that might be the easiest way, send it to Arthur, is that okay, Arthur? Thank you.
Like right now, or?
No, no.
Well, he can put it up on the screen, it's like, is that what?
No, that's fine, all right, is there any other questions? I think we have directions, uh, just Carrie.
I have one more question for the September seventh meeting, we didn't discuss the city parcels yet. Uh, it would be a source of income, um, I don't, we have preliminary numbers, I'm not positive I'm supposed to say them, but they're gonna come your way. Uh, they would offset the cost of everything we've talked about tonight.
Okay.
That's good to know.
Um, and so I believe you need a city council vote in order to sell it to us, I hope to have the, the appraisal to you before the September seventh meeting then, if you want to do it then.
And then we have to work with our attorney on that.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, please remember that Don said it would probably be four to six months for us to get through that, and then I would say we need to do our own appraisal of the property, uh, to make sure that it fits with the appraisal that Caltrans is doing. Because we are, it is incumbent upon us legally to get fair market value for the property, that's, comes from Dawn. I guess that's a state law, when we go to sell it, that we have to get a fair market value for it.
Yeah. Well, that'd be great, if we could move forward on something like that too, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I'll have to check with our right-of-way agent that that's not too fast, but I'll at least get you some information and.
Yeah, there's.
Because part of that. Discussing the other night, um, there's, there's different, uh, there's three different lots there, so, city lot, so we don't know what that means. As far as that goes.
Yeah, we're looking at purchasing two and renting the third.
Oh, okay.
She's so organized.
Yes, she is.
I haven't actually.
That would be great, yeah, if we can bring that forward too, because that's something that, uh, I think would benefit everybody, you know, especially you guys in the future.
Okay, yeah, it'll, it'll go through my right-of-way department for sure, um, but whatever I can do to help facilitate it and get it on your agenda, whatever.
Mr. Mayor, have we, um, I asked Dawn to come down to do a, uh, some kind of a, overview with us on, for a, uh, a meeting, not a, not a voting meeting, but just, uh, workshop, have we got that set up for him to come down and do that and go over the properties and that sort of stuff, or are we still working on that?
Um, as far as I know, he's probably still working on that, because he hasn't had a lot of time lately, so, uh, he just got back from his vacation, so, I will ask him though.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, our last meeting gave direction to the staff to do the research on the parcels.
Right, on the parcels that were looked.
Right, and staff was working on that today.
Yeah.
Randy had given direction to staff to work on.
Yeah, so we gotta wait till that goes.
Staff gets their work done.
Yeah, at that point in time, okay, all right, do we have any other questions for, uh, Caltrans or Carrie or anybody?
Thanks for being here.
Yes.
It was productive.
Paul, do you have any more questions?
Uh, no, not at this time.
All right, thank you, all right, Cory?
Oh, no, I don't have any questions.
No, just a reminder about the workshop next Wednesday, hope to see EDC here.
Oh, yes. Yes.
I do have one comment, and Josh is here, and I spoke with Reta today, and, uh, Reta asked that we look at dates for the budget workshop.
I was gonna bring that up as soon as you're done.
While we're here with our calendars, we should look at dates before the end of August. But we should let Caltrans go, we've got a drive.
Yes.
Thank you.
Awesome, thanks you guys.
Drive down Highway Three.
Go look, it's getting dark enough, you could tell which, where the stop, where the lights need to go. Yeah, that's good, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Yes, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your influence.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Hi, Sharon.
Bye, Nancy.
Bye, Carrie, thank you.
Everybody's leaving, bye Travis. Okay, we still got Arthur.
Yes.
And Cindy and Josh.
And Paul.
Did we look at thirtieth for a workshop for finance, March thirtieth or thirty-first?
Uh, hi, what, what do you guys think, the thirty-first?
Well. I was looking at the thirty-first.
Yeah.
Yep, thirty-first is fine. Okay, let me. Come on, honey.
Yeah.
At six-thirty.
Six-thirty.
Thirty-first, six-thirty?
Yep.
Does that sound good, Paul?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah.
At six-thirty here.
Here, yes, obvious.
Sounds good.
Thirty-first.
Budget workshop.
Thirty, budget.
Bye, Josh.
Awesome, we got it, you didn't have to throw something at me, Josh. I told Josh.
We were gonna do it.
Mr. Mayor, this will be a workshop only, there'll be no decisions made at this meeting.
Right.
Correct.
That's correct.
Perfect, thank you for reminding. Okay, you got that, Arthur? Thank you.
And Arthur will be here too, right, Arthur? All right.
Awesome, okay, well then, this meeting is adjourned, we are done.
Okay.